I was heckled, I was heckled for the first two years of my career by people who could actually see about much earlier than I seen them. Nah, that's what they, that's why they're my former wall funders.
We are calling the April Board Meeting to order. At this time, the pledge will be led by one of our all-star students, Mr. Alex Lee, who was recently selected to represent Martin County High School at Governor's School West. Mr. Lee?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Collins?
Let's power heads. Lord, we come to you tonight in prayer for the decisions made here and for our school district. And we pray that you uplift the board and the decisions made here tonight for the betterment in our community, staff and students. And all these things, we pray in your name, amen.
Can we get a motion for approval of the agenda? We're properly moved in segment to approve the agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Agenda approved, now consent agenda.
So move.
Motion, need a second. We're properly moved in segment to approve the consent agenda, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent agenda approved. Recognitions, we want to start with Ms. Gwen.
Good evening, Martin County Schools, Board of Ed, parents and community members. Tonight, we would like to recognize Alex Lee as our Governor's School representative for Martin County for the 24-25 school year. The North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week summer program, residential program for gifted and talented high school students. They will be integrating academic disciplines, the arts and unique courses on two campuses, one in Raleigh at Meredith's and the other at UNCG in Greensboro. The program runs from July the 20th, June the 22nd to July the 19th. Learning focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline, and it does not involve credit, tests or grades. Students are selected to attend through a competitive process after being nominated by their public school unit. This year alone, there were 1,882 nominations from across the state. I am pleased to announce that Martin County Schools will have Alex Lee, a junior from Martin County High School, as our representative for the 24-25 school year. Alex will be, his content area is English. And on a side note, Alex qualified for multiple areas, so he had lots of choices to choose from. Please join me in congratulating Alex on a job well done and well wishes on his next adventure. Congratulations.
Can we give Mr. Lee another hand, representing Martin County? Congratulations, and now Ms. Kim Lilly with the March Mentor of the Month.
Good evening. It is our pleasure to announce the K-5, the March K-5 and the March 6-12 Mentors of the Month. We do thank them for their dedication, their encouragement with our BTs and also their leadership. So if Jenna Hardison can step forward and Billy Vandeford and Gwen. We're just going to read a little, a couple of little statements from your BTs. I'm going to start with Jenna. Jenna, Ms. Hardison has been mentoring two BTs this year. One of them out of her content area at her site and also another BT at another school. That school had limited mentors that we could choose from, so Jenna has graciously been doing that, so. One of the BTs said, Jenna is always there to support me through listening and concerns and also sharing resources. Another BT said, even though we teach different subjects, my mentor has been an invaluable support system during my time as a beginning teacher. She is always there to answer my questions, whether they're about classroom management, behavior strategies, or general teaching challenges. One of the most impactful things she has done for me was arranging for me to observe other art teachers out of, and an experience that helped me grow in ways that I could not have otherwise. She is easy to talk to, always willing to help, and she has created a classroom where students feel safe and supported. It's clear that her students respect her and value her and admire the way she fosters such a positive learning environment. She is truly deserving of this recognition as Mentor of the Month. She's kind, dedicated, supportive, and she embodies what mentorship should be. So we thank you Jenna.
The 6-12 Mentor of the Month is Ms. Billy Vandeford from South Creek Middle School. Ms. Vandeford, much like Ms. Hardison, has two mentees in her building and they are very young, very young. And they had some really nice things to say, Ms. Vandeford. It says, Ms. Vandeford has been very helpful this year. Anytime that I come for her, come to her for help, she fully provides me with the most help she can. And if there's something she can't do, she keeps me updated every step of the way, so I don't feel lost or that she's forgotten me. And another mentee says, Ms. Vandeford is always there when I need help, even if she doesn't know the answer, she will figure it out. She checks on me regularly and advocates for me when I need it. And your principals in your building also say you go above and beyond whatever they ask you to with always a smile on your face. And we appreciate that, and your mentees love you to death.
Want to thank our two teachers who are serving as mentors a very important job. And now Dr. White, we will go into your superintendent report.
Yes, well, we want to start tonight with the good news continuing. This week is National Assistant Principals Week. We just want to give a shout out to all of our assistant principals across Martin County Schools. They keep us running, they keep us organized and efficient, and we are just so thankful to have every single assistant principal working in Martin County Schools. We are blessed with the best in that department and actually in every department. All right, we have two students that were recently recognized as completing their health science pathway. These students have actually become a CNA before they have even graduated from high school. So they can actually go and be employed in the health industry as a CNA, and they have not even graduated from high school yet. That is one example of how Martin offers more. This year, we had a junior chef team complete, compete in the statewide competition for the best school meal. These kids had to do everything from plan for appropriate safety in the kitchen to abide by the North Carolina nutrition requirements for school meals. They had to do it all, the things that we do every single day. And again, this was a statewide competition, and we are so proud that our team won second place in the entire state of North Carolina. Shout out to these awesome students as well as their amazing teacher for the work that they did in the Junior Chef Competition. They were very impressive. Also, exciting things are happening in the area of robotics. Last year, we started our first high school robotics team, and the team has now competed in two competitions this year. And last year, first time ever they went, they won the Rookie of the Year Award. This year, they went to their second competition ever, and what did they do? They came home with the imagery award, which recognizes excellence in engineering, aesthetics, and integration of machine design with branding. We are so proud of our robotics team and thankful for all of the adults that work with the team and take the time to implement this initiative. Great side note, we are also exploring grant opportunities that are going to bring robotics to our middle schools next year. So we're looking forward to actually expanding the robotics opportunities for the students of Martin County. Very proud of our students who are committed to service. Several of our students had a signing day. On March 28th, Ryan Windly signed to serve his state and country as a member of the Army National Guard. Congratulations, Ryan. And on March 3rd, Ian Shaw and Anika Reedy signed to serve their state and country as a member of the National Army Guard, as the Arm, a member of the Army National Guard. Congratulations to all these students, they're making us so very proud. Our FFA had a busy last few days. On Friday, the team went to the forestry CDE competition. They did absolutely fantastic. They had to identify trees, they had to use forestry tools. After the competition, our team ended up fifth in the entire region, so shout out to our FFA. Our middle school students participated in the math competition in Beaufort County during the month of March. Congratulations to Rayland Moore for coming in third place in the seventh grade out of the entire competition. And to our seventh grade middle school team for coming in second place out of the entire competition. Our children are doing remarkable things in Martin County Schools, and we are so proud. The news keeps coming as well as the opportunities for our children. We had not one, but two hunter safety teams that recently competed representing Martin County Schools. We had the Martin Black and the Martin Silver Team, which competed in the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission's Youth Hunter Safety Education Skills Tournament on Saturday, March 29th. Our teams both did fantastic. Black placed 14th in the entire district, and we are talking about out of 205 competitors, Kayden Manning placed 17th. So our students represented us very well at an extremely large competition. I was actually there to watch the competition that day and could not have been more proud and more astonished at the size. This was a very large competition, and our children, our coaches, thank you to the coaches who worked with these children on teaching these hunter safety skills, we are incredibly blessed. Again, we want to recognize Alex Lee, who is a junior at Martin County High School and was selected to attend the prestigious North Carolina Governor's School. It was a highly competitive selection process, and he has earned a place among the state's top scholars. Congratulations again, Alex. Congratulations to the very first group of students to be inducted into the National Honor Society as Martin County Gators. Go Gators, Gators, and congratulations to all of our students. Martin County Schools held their first-ever job fair. Last year, we did hold some pop-up job fair events, but this year, we held our first-ever job fair, and it was spectacular. We had a wonderful event that was incredibly well attended. We had job interviews that were held on the spot for both certified and classified positions. It was a wonderful day. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Bowen, Elizabeth Roat, all of our schools, every person involved. We, this is something that we are definitely going to continue doing. Got some great feedback from those who attended and are excited to see so many applicants wanting to be a part of our fantastic school system. Want to give a shout out to Chief Robinson for a wonderful right-flight field day. Our middle school students are now working through the right-flight curriculum, which teaches them about aviation, all aspects of aviation, safety, et cetera. And last week, our students were actually able to go to our local airport and take a field trip to explore the planes. They actually were able to see planes land, meet the pilots. Elizabeth City State's aviation van was there, and so it was just a wonderful day for our students. And we want to say thank you to our wonderful Sheriff's Department, our Sheriff Drew Robinson, for supporting this wonderful right-flight field day. Later on, in the month of May, students who successfully complete the curriculum will actually get to fly with their parent over Martin County. So the actual right-flight, flight experience will be coming up very soon, and we're very thankful for the opportunity for our children. We held our CTE Career and College Fair on March 13th. This event was absolutely spectacular. We had over 54 vendors here to meet our students. They could learn more about the Lineman Academy, becoming an EMT. They actually had hands-on masonry experience. Mason, Tim Manning Masonry was here actually teaching students how to lay brick. We had the forestry service here. We had numerous colleges and universities. So we are planting the seeds with our students to help them see a vision for their future. They're actually getting the hands-on opportunities to see and learn more about careers that are available to them, many of which are right here in Martin County. So thank you to everyone who participated in our CTE College, Career and College Fair. Special shout out to Jason Nguyen, who was a big part of organizing that for our students. It was a simply fantastic day. Kindergarten registration is upon us. We have already held a couple of days of registration, and we want you to save the dates of April 9th and 10th for kindergarten registration. April 9th will be from 2:00 to 7:00, April 10th from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., right here at the Innovation Campus. The first 60 families to register their child will receive a $5 ticket to Scoop's Ice Cream Truck. So you come, you get registered for the best kindergarten anywhere could possibly offer, and you get free ice cream. So we are looking forward to meeting our newest Martin County students on April 9th and 10th, right here at the Innovation Campus. We want to give a special thank you to Rotary and to the many, many, many volunteers that came out for the I Like Me Event. This event is again sponsored by Rotary, and it provides a book for every single kindergartner in Martin County. They get a book as well as a volunteer who sits down and reads that book with them, and then they're able to take it home. It is one of the best, most wonderful days of the school year. We want to say thank you to every person who came out and volunteered their time. We had, in some situations, more volunteers than we had students. And so some students actually were able to have two people sit down and read to them and read with them. It was a wonderful, wonderful day. So thank you to everyone who had a part in such a special and wonderful event. We celebrated Read Across America Spirit Week. Reading equals a great future. We need our children in books every single day. We know that the more they read, the more they're going to know. And so we want to make reading fun, hence celebrating Read Across America Spirit Week. I want to give a shout out to all of our schools who participated in this. There were all sorts of dress-up days. Our students were so very excited, and thank you to our parents, because we know that the dress-up days mean you have to do some prior planning at home and making sure you're ready to celebrate. So thank you for your participation. It was such a fun event for our students, and it makes reading even more enjoyable. Our Odyssey of the Mind teams have represented us so very well this year. We had four teams go to the state competition during the month of March, and we are so excited to announce that one of our teams actually placed third in the entire state of North Carolina. So shout out to all of our Odyssey of the Mind teams. Every single one of them represented us so well. This team was third overall, but they actually had the highest spontaneous score in the state. There's two parts of competition, a performance and a spontaneous. I'm so proud of our children, and I want to give a special thank you to Kristy Stevens, who is our Head Odyssey of the Mind Coach. She spends daily afternoons with these children from September all the way through the month of March, and so we appreciate her time. We also had several parent coaches this year and volunteers who just did a phenomenal job. Just another way that we are giving our students hands-on learning experiences. Battle of the Books, congratulations to our third-place team, Jamesville Elementary, our second-place team, E.J. Hayes, and our first-place team, Rogers Elementary School. Rogers took the gold in a close competition. They did such a wonderful job, and we are proud to report that they recently competed at the regional competition and actually placed third place in the entire region. There was some very stiff competition. They were only two questions out of second place. So we are so proud of Ms. Salz, our Rogers Elementary School coach, and every single member of that team. I believe it was 18 to 20 books that these students had to read and deeply understand and memorize events and facts from. They have been working on this since last year at this time. So these students put in a ton of work to do this, and thank you to their coach who puts in the time after school. They've made us so proud and represented us so well. Today was a special day in Martin County Schools as we had Representative Shelley Willingham on-site. Our Martin Innovative Middle School students were actually on a field trip today. However, several of them were so excited to meet Representative Willingham that they stayed back to share more about Martin Innovative Middle School. They took him through some of their classroom projects and showed how the program emphasizes project-based learning. They showed him examples. We were able to take him on a tour of the school. We talked about the collaborative projects that we've done with several of our elementary schools, the partnership with East Carolina University. And our students were able to ask him some fantastic questions about his day-to-day operations, how they could support him, and tell him ways that he could support us. So I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to Representative Willingham for being here in Martin County Schools today. This is the second year in a row that he has made it a priority to visit our classrooms during this special, special Legislators in School Week. So thank you so much to Representative Willingham. And backed by popular demand, you can once again order your homemade dog treats for your four-legged friends. Ms. Cindy Hills, Exceptional Children's Class at Martin County High School, is teaming up with April Stahl's class at Riverside Middle School to produce these handmade treats. These students get together, they learn how to be safe in the classroom, they learn math skills such as measurement and life skills such as preparing food. The treats are $5 per bag, and payment will be taken at delivery or pickup. Exact change is greatly appreciated. Please support this awesome endeavor. As a reminder to our parents, our 25-26 calendar has been approved. It is available on our social media as well as our school website, so you can already start planning for a fantastic next school year in Martin County Schools. Also a reminder to our parents, the choice is yours. Martin County Schools offers school choice, and the window is open. No matter the district that you live in, you may choose the school that you would like for your child. You do need to fill out an application and have it approved, and that application is available on our social media as well as our website. So don't forget to get that in as soon as possible. Mark your calendar if you save the dates. Many of you know that last, this year is the first year of our Martin Innovative Middle School STEAM Program. As a part of that program at the middle school and at Martin County High School, we have started a theater program. This program is doing phenomenal things. They've actually just started a new musical that's going to be debuted in May. It's called Into the Woods, it's going to be spectacular. And in order to get this program off the ground, the Rocky Hawk Opry is coming to Martin County. These folks do an Opry in Chawan County every year and donate all the proceeds to Relay for Life. They heard about our theater program and have willingly said that they would come to Martin County and put on this phenomenal show for our residents and donate half the proceeds to Relay for Life like they normally do, and the other half to our brand-new Martin County Schools Theater Department. So we are asking everyone to please come out and support these musicians. Some of them are traveling two hours each way, some of them live in Virginia. You will not be disappointed, it's going to be a spectacular show. Saturday, April 12th, that's this Saturday, we have shows at 3:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Tickets are $15. You can buy them in advance at the businesses listed below as well as our central office, or you can also buy them at the door. Our theater students will also be on hand for both shows, providing concessions. So it's just going to be a wonderful day of some really talented musicians and some great music. So come on out and support our theater department this Saturday at either 3:00 or 7:00 p.m. Also, as a reminder, our Martin County Schools preschool program, Spring Open House, is happening very soon. Williamson Primary, April 8th from 3:00 to 6:00. Jamesville, April 14th from 3:00 to 6:00. And South Creek, April 17th from 3:00 to 6:00. You have to submit your application by May 15th in order to be considered for our preschool program. But come out these days and learn more about how you can be a part of the Martin County Schools pre-k program. It is phenomenal and gives your child a head start on their K-12 school career. Don't forget, April 9th and 10th kindergarten registration right here at the IC. Come register for the best kindergarten around and get your sweet treat. And as a reminder, we have published numerous summer camp opportunities on our website and social media. Our goal is to pack this summer with learning opportunities for our students. Everything from reading camps to STEM camps to AIG camps to special camps for our exceptional children, you name it, we've most likely got it. So we are updating that information, and we're going to have even more. We've got some camps that we haven't even officially announced yet. So stay tuned, parents. Make sure you've liked us on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, because we really keep our social media going daily with brand-new posts. So we've got you covered this summer, and by the way, these camps are free of charge. So great opportunities for our students to stay engaged and our parents to be supported this summer. Chair Purvis, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. White. Martin offers more, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mazel to say, "Go Gators." Okay, we are moving to our information action items and ask Ms. Lilly to go forward with board policy.
Good evening. First up for our policies review, we have Board Policy 2310 on public participation in board meetings. There were some minor word changing in there that was presented to you in your board packet. At this time, I'd like to see if you have any questions. And then we also have Policy Number 2230, Board Committees. Again, there were minor word changes in that one, and if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Okay, that was for first read.
Okay.
Thank you.
And now we're going to ask Dr. White and Ms. Tura if they can give us the Capitol And now, we're going to ask Dr. White and Ms. Entour if they can give us the capital outlay budget followed by the current expense budget.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, you've received your capital outlay and local current expense budgets in your packets. You actually should have received those last week so you've had a few days to look over those. We're just going to go ahead and do an overview of the key points. We're going to start with the capital outlay budget. The spreadsheet is just a consolidation of all the capital outlay requests from the schools and departments and we've consolidated this for you. What we did this year is we created a multi-year plan. This was to disperse all the expenses over the next ten years to allow for increased manageability for the budget. Before, in years past, we've just presented it, all of our needs, all at once, all in one column. The county had asked if we could potentially break that down for them because it was a pretty overwhelming number. Last year, our original requests were over six million dollars. The county funded us six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. So, that was a big difference. So, we did break it down so it's more manageable. As you can see, it's over ten years. The first five years are broken out and then six through ten is in one column because, of course, six to ten years from now, many things can change. And so, with that, our total capital outlay request just for this current upcoming fiscal year is one million, eight thousand, twenty-five dollars. So, again, that's much more manageable to get up to one million from six hundred thousand versus trying to get up to eight million from six hundred thousand. So, we think that this will be more presentable to the county. And, of course, as years go on, this year, we've had all of our school requests. Next year, as you can see, the budget is just over one million, but then we would add any new additional school requests onto that as well. So, that number may increase because the schools might have new needs between now and then. But, again, this is a working model. We will continue to update it in future years, but for this current fiscal upcoming year, it's the one million, eight thousand, twenty-five. Are there any questions?
I just want to reiterate on this that in meeting with the county commissioners, this was a request that we take our huge eight billion dollar request and break it down, but this also coincides with our strategic plan. So, you know that earlier this year in November, you approved a five-year strategic plan and so we're trying to align our budget with our strategic plan and make it more manageable for our county commission as they are working to get our hospital back and to move the county forward in manageable chunks. So, if approved tonight, when presented to the county commissioners at our meeting, we would outline the needs for the next several years so that they are not, so that they are more equipped to know what's coming three years down the road and the needs that are coming in the future versus just right now in one chunk.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, this is presented for the board's consideration and approval.
So, we have been presented with capital outlay for 2025-2026. Can we get a motion?
Second.
They're probably moved to second it to approve this capital outlay budget. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, so next, we're going to move on to our local current expense budget. This, again, we're going to go over the key points of this budget that you had received. So, I based the budget on the governor's budget. The governor has a three percent salary increase proposed in his budget. Right now, the state, of course, has not passed the budget and so we can only go by preliminary numbers by the governor. So, this, of course, this three percent salary increase does, the state will not fund any local positions and so this will affect our local budget. Hospitalization increase, we're estimating that it will increase from the current seven thousand ninety-five annual cost to the eighty-five hundred annual cost. What we did is we took the average percentage increase over the last two years to come to this figure. The retirement rate increase, we are estimating it to go from twenty-four point oh four percent to twenty-four point five percent. This, again, is based on a three-year average. And, again, these numbers will come from the state once they solidify everything, but at this moment, this is what we've had to go by. We've also had to build in a ten percent average increase for insurance premiums. We did reach out to all of our insurance companies to request what those increased rates would be and it was an average of ten percent across the board. Maintenance increases are built in due to the increased cost of supplies and parts. I know I don't have to explain that one. We've also increased our utilities and some other supplies based on the Consumer Price Index, which is currently two-point-eight percent. So, this is a new piece that we're looking to hopefully budget this year is we did include a proposed three-hundred-dollar classified supplement, which would total seventy-five thousand dollars with benefits. Again, this would hinge based on county funding. This is something that we really want to be able to give to the classified staff, but, again, it's based on funding. And we would like this to be reoccurring, but I think we would revisit it year to year to make sure that that funding was maintained. But, we did build it in this year in hopes that we can go ahead and provide that. This budget that you're looking at in your packet includes the budget trend for the past two years so you can compare where we are, where we were, where we are now. Our total local current expense request is seven million, ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. This is a five-point-seven-five increase over last year's budget. And just so you understand, last year, we requested eight-point-two million and the county only funded us six-point-two million. So, we had to cut our budget over this past year by two million dollars. And so, we really tightened up and this year, again, with the new increases that we are anticipating coming down the road, you know, we're going to be on tight strings again, but we'll see how that goes. So, if you have any questions?
Question?
I have one question. Do we know, Ms. Entour, about when the state would approve? Like, I know we are guesstimating, but when?
Well, it's the first year of their biennium budget that they're going into, so they call this the long session and when, it can be a long session. We don't have a target date. Really, they're supposed to have the budget passed by July 1st, but they, I mean, in years past, they've gone all the way into December before and so we pray for July 1 and we're at their mercy, really, when it comes down to that. So, we still have to operate moving forward whether they pass the budget or not.
Understood.
So...
Okay. All right, then, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask then for a motion to approve the 2025-2026 current expense budget as presented.
So, move?
Second.
They're probably moved to second it to approve the current expense budget as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, attorney at person, high school project manager, RFQ.
Good evening, board. So, the first of two topics for me this evening, this board, with the assistance of myself and the administration, put out an RFQ for project management services for the new high school. You received the proposal of BMG, with the president of that being John Barath. You had an opportunity to interview Mr. Barath. At this time, does any members of the board have any questions for me? Otherwise, do you have any decision to make?
I did include the references in your weekly newsletter for all of our candidates as well as our management group.
Okay, can we get a motion if there are no questions as far as Mr. Barath?
I move. We go with Mr. Barath.
Second. They're probably moved to second it to hire for our project manager, John Barath. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you, board. Second item before you is the selection of the design build firm for the new high school. As you know, you received those proposals. You interviewed the three groups that came before you. You've toured schools. What, if any, questions do you have at this time?
So, we went through a lot of information. Have a packet. We had three.
I don't know what you mean. If there are no questions, has the board made any decision?
Board, are we ready? Can we get a question?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready. So, I'm going to call for a motion as far as the design build firm.
Make a motion. We go with Daniels and Dan.
Motion Daniels and Daniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Do you mind, or can we have a discussion as well?
Certainly. That's the purview of the chair.
No, sir. We got a, okay, let me just, motion and a second. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to be trying to transparent. I know it's a big decision for the community and stuff as well, so I wanted to make sure we at least give a little bit of wording, you know, for different kind of thoughts on the different groups. Was kind of where my head was at. So, yeah, wanted to kind of just at least open it up for a little bit of discussion just so that the public knows kind of where our heads at on some of these groups as it's a big decision, obviously, for our community.
Okay, do we want to start with, I guess I can start with Mr. Connor and we go Barnhill, Daniels, and Dan. I mean, is that how?
I think you open it up for discussion, but the motion gets off the floor. Would you mind?
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second.
I would open up for discussion of the motion on the floor, whether that's in support of one or otherwise.
Or we could withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion and discuss.
And go straight to discussion.
I withdraw my motion.
Perfect.
Is that, okay, so we're going to start over.
Start with discussion.
And start with the discussion. As Mr. Connor said, this is a sixty-two million dollar project.
Yeah, and I don't mind opening up. Yeah, like I said, sixty-two million dollar projects. Obviously, just want to make sure, you know, we all had a chance to talk about it. I think we had three very qualified groups that we interviewed, toured the schools. I think all of them, none of them have been a bad choice whatsoever. Just my thoughts out there, I really did think Daniels and Daniels and their group had a lot of good experience and I thought they had a lot of good construction qualities in their projects. I know they hadn't done a complete high school, so that was the only thing that I had a little concern on. I think they're a great group and think they do have the capacity to do that. Barnhill was one that I had probably leaned towards. I saw that their construction, they've done a lot of projects across the state, has that experience and has that capacity as well as well as a lot of local contractors. So, that was a piece that kind of drew me towards them. So, just kind of one of, that was my two pieces. The third group, I know that has worked with some other ones.
They published a name mostly, right? Just so the public know.
Yeah, so, so the three groups, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, absolutely.
So, the three groups that applied were Daniels and Daniels, Aratio. The second group was Barnhill partnering with Mosley as the designer and the third group was Metcon partnering with SFLA. So, those are your three design build teams.
Yeah, and then the third one, like I said, Metcon and their group. I thought they had a lot of good experience as well, just didn't know about the capacity of some of their builds on the sustainability long-term. Could we, as a district, keep up with what they are building with some of their maintenance and different pieces of the puzzle? So, that was my thoughts on those, but wanted to see if anybody else had any thoughts before we make a final decision.
In looking at each of them, they all had some good qualities. I think the Metcon meeting their deadlines, some of that concerned me with some of them, but Daniels and Daniels is a smaller construction company. However, their workmanship, their craftsmanship seemed to be very good. I think they take a lot of pride in what they do. And the school that we saw that they built, even though it was an elementary school, it had some really good thoughtful things put in it as far as storage and it looked like it was done well. The Barnhill school that we looked at, which was a high school, Chapel Hill, seemed to me that, it was two years old and some of the stripping was coming off in a couple of places I saw. I didn't think the workmanship was as good. I didn't think the design was as good. I think Barnhill's a great company. I think they do a lot of work, a lot of good work. But, for some reason, I just felt like Daniels and Daniels was, everybody starts out small. They're smaller, but they did have, I mean, they did have contractors that they worked with and I think that they would use contractors from this area as well because of the distance and it would be cheaper for them probably if they got local contractors for some of their stuff. But, it was between those two, Daniels and Daniels.
For you.
And Barnhill.
For me.
Who's next?
I would like to say as far as when we interviewed them.
When we interviewed them, I can get lab on, hoping to get it. I like the idea, well, what they said was they came in under budget and on time and under time. That was Daniels and Daniels. Barnhill, their team, they've done a lot of work always. They're doing the Dominion thing about a high school beside a hospital, but the team that they have didn't seem to have a lot of cohesion together. I mean, there's some people's been there for two years, then three years, then four years together, and then some people's going to be together for two years together. With Daniels and Daniels, it's a family and they've been together just a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my thought process was more along the lines of leaning more towards the Barnhill and the Mosley. And the biggest reason is, is after looking at the references, it appears that, you know, with Barnhill being a bigger group, they're going to have more subs. They're going, which means the competitive pricing should be better with the more subs, the more chances you have, you know, to get the cost. As far as for when we looked at the school, I agree with what Ms. Nelson said about, you know, the school we looked at in Chapel Hill, but the difference was the school in Chapel Hill was older and had about three times the students in it every day that, you know, the school we looked at and that Daniels and Daniels did. So, my leaning is more for Barnhill.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scott?
Well, I'm pretty much leaning a little bit more towards Barnhill as well, checking with the references that Dr. White sent out and reading through those and all that. It seems to me that they would be the one that seemed to go with. Daniels and Daniels did present very well and, yes, they are a family operation, but, you know, I just feel that just like Mr. Baker said, you know, I think we might be able to get some more competitive pricing. Barnhill do meet their deadlines, so there was no problem with meeting their deadlines or nothing like that. So, I just feel that that's the way I will go.
Thank you. Ms. Mason?
First, I would like to start out by saying that I know that Daniels, I'm Daniels and Daniels, and I know that they are a small company. However, someone has to get a start somewhere and I think that they do pay, like, looking at the school that they did, the elementary school, it's like they paid personal attention to the needs of the students. And I know it was an elementary school, but the same thing applies to a high school. And it's just seen like overall, like the construction was, it was very well. It was well put together. And I like Barnhill and Barnhill, but I just feel like it's like a number. Sometimes when you get in a big project, you become a number because they are used to having so many clients, but when you come to a small used to having so many clients, but when you come to a smaller group, as in this construction company, Daniels and Daniels, it's like they're gonna be more tailored to you. And I feel like it'd be easy to access them because you don't have to go through so many people. I mean, they're right there. And then we did talk to them about them using local contractors, and so I don't think that's going to be a problem. I'm for Daniels and Daniels.
Okay. Can I say one more?
Yes, ma'am.
In coming in under budget, Daniels and Daniels was able to come in under budget enough that they had enough money to purchase their furniture for their school. And to me, that was a big thing. Because we're in that sixty-two million and we can't go over. I mean, that's it. And that was the thing I think that I thought about as much as any. Either company, I'm okay with.
Okay. I, I think Ms. Mason and then Ms. Shaver.
Okay.
Okay, and I also would like to add that if given the opportunity, they would, they did not have the opportunity, but if they had the opportunity, then they would have came up with something for us like Barn Hill did. They would've came up with the design and they could've did other things, but Barn Hill had the upper hand. It's call a spade a spade, they had the upper hand. And so, I feel like there was an unfair advantage, disadvantage to Daniels and Daniels. And it kind of like, it kind of put them like underneath Barn Hill and Barn Hill as far as making it seem like the thing that they are capable of doing. But again, I'm gonna reiterate, that elementary school was well put together, the designs was everything. The, the attention that they put into that building for the kids was remarkable. They did a fantastic job. Going through there, I, I couldn't even pick out nothing that I did not like, and it was an elementary school. So, I know they would bring that same level of attention to a high school.
The, two other things that I liked about Daniels and Daniels, when we interviewed them, and they talked about, you know, they have QR codes everywhere where students can bring it up online, QR code and see it, and then they have the drone fly by so you can see week by week the progress. They offered that, Barn Hill didn't, and so I like Daniels and Daniels, that's, that's me.
And I, I don't, do you, Chair, do you mind if I finish out with something before you go? I think this is...
It's part of the start.
Yeah, sorry, but I, I think this is, is a good thing of showing, I wanted to make sure the public shaw that we, we have thought through this, we have different opinions. I don't think there's a wrong answer to this question. I think both groups, you know, can be solid, so I just wanted to make sure to make that clear, and I appreciate all the comments, so I think it's just different, different thing of, of opinions, but...
Thank you. Well, we had a lot of information, we got the packets, and I know the Board individually has read up on it, so any other comments?
I'm not, I'm not.
I think both candidates are phenomenal. All candidates are fantastic, and I just wanna thank all candidates who applied to partner with our school system on this life-changing opportunity for the citizens of Martin County and most importantly, for the children of Martin County. I'm very thankful for every person that applied, and I do agree with everything the Board members have said. I don't think there is a wrong decision, and we are very blessed with that, that we have fantastic candidates before us. Daniels and Daniels, like Ms. Mason, Mr. Shaver have shared, they provide that personal detail, they provide that personal attention, which is fantastic. And while they don't have the same experience of, of Barn Hill, definitely appreciate the fact that they come in under budget in several of the projects that we looked at, which is a huge piece for us, as we will honor the sixty-two million, have been clear with our candidates that we will not go over the sixty-two million and that they have to operate within that budget. We cannot go beyond. Barn Hill also gave us a phenomenal presentation with Mosley. Mosley was the architect who was willing to look at, across our school system and, and help us decide which project we should pursue first because we have several capital needs, and Mosley came in and walked all of our buildings with us and helped us make the decision to go to the high school first and helped us with some feasibility needs there, and so deeply appreciate them doing that and supporting us. As far as the references, in calling the references, there were some references that had worked with both companies and spoke very highly about both. So, again, there was not a bad reference for any of our candidates. All references spoke highly of all of our candidates, which again, is just a true testament to the quality of work that they all do. The one candidate that had worked with both did recommend Barn Hill for this project because the reference had worked with both companies and they both did a phenomenal job, but, but because of the size of the project, they, they recommended Barn Hill because of the volume of subcontractors, and they believed that that would help us keep our costs low because they do have a wider variety of subcontractors and have a lot more experience with this volume of projects. But again, both candidates are phenomenal, all candidates were phenomenal, and there was not a bad reference for any of them. And so, again, thank you to everybody who reached out to partner with us on this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. White. Okay. Now, I will call for a motion for our design bill.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go with Daniels and Daniels.
Have a motion.
I'll say it.
Have a second. Okay, I'm gonna ask for raising of hand. All those in favor of Daniels and Daniels, would you indicate by raising your hand? All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion for Daniels and Daniels. Thank you.
Madam Chair, move the Martin County Board of Education in a closed session, subject to the advice from attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The Board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the Board's attorney to order, in order to preserve the attorney client, client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G and the N.C. General Statute 115C-402. The Board will go, will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in the N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, then promptly move the second to go in closed session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, closed session granted.
Ladies and gentlemen, give the three minutes to make the presentations. A request to speak for a group will be given five minutes to address the board. Individuals of groups will be called on to speak in order in the order on the sign up sheet. If an individual is not present or declines to speak, the next person on the sign up sheet will be called upon. If the twenty minute period ends during a speaker's presentation, the public comment period will end at the conclusion of the time allotted to the presenter. Any materials that the individual or group wishes to present to the board should be submitted prior to the meeting so they can be distributed. The board will not respond to comments except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Superintendent will provide a written response for questions posed to the board within ten working days of the meeting. The board will not hear public comments relating to personnel issues or student issues that are under investigation by the administration.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, Mr. Hardison, are you representing individual or group?
With my company, Matchwellens.
Okay.
If this wasn't in Martin County, I wouldn't be here tonight, but this is where I live. My name's Tim Hardison, nineteen seventy seven graduate of Winston High School, played on two state baseball championships and went on to East Carolina with a baseball scholarship where I got my graduate and undergraduate and graduate degrees in physical education with a concentration in exercise physiology. I'm here tonight to ask the board why Martin County schools recently turned down a program that I developed almost twenty years ago for my students at Winston Middle School that's been taught to over a hundred thousand seventh graders here in North Carolina as completely free. For those not familiar with historical context, in September of two thousand and six in the enterprise, a twenty year Harvard study was published that said Martin County residents had the shortest life expectancy of any county in North Carolina. With my background in living here, I looked into why. Our diabetes rate was eighty seven percent above the state average, cardiovascular disease was thirty four percent, and sixty percent of our adults were overweight or obese. At that time, the childhood obesity epidemic was all in the news, and in talking with my seventh graders, we actually measured heights and weights and they computed their BMI. Fifty eight percent of my kids were overweight or obese. Since these chronic diseases are lifestyle related, I thought that I could educate these kids to take care of their body systems and avoid these types of diseases and become healthier adults. The result was Match, motivating adolescents with technology to choose health. Match was developed being interdisciplinary approach to childhood obesity that empowered students through nutrition, education, and increased physical activity to make good choices. Match was backward designed to meet educational objectives using relevant health topics with kids using their own data. After two years of promising outcomes, seventy percent of our kids showed improved BMI status. I met Dr. Suzanne Lazaric, pediatrician at the Pediatric Health and Weight Center at Brody School of Medicine. She afforded me the opportunity to speak to the childhood obesity think tank where State Board Chairman Howard Lee pulled me out of the classroom here in Martin County and commissioned me to expand Match. In the next, I was created a position here at Martin County Board of Education for that first year. Then two year, the next year I was created a position at the Brody School of Medicine where we continued to work and expand the program. Overweight students were twice as likely to become healthy weight and less than half as likely to go on to become obese from the published results she had. The Center for Teaching Research and Translation at UNC, who evaluates effectiveness of programs, or the CDC?
He's match.
Okay. Declared a research test enabling SNAP Ed funding to pay for Match, the DOD found Match the only program in the literature to have sustainable results beyond one year. In two thousand and fourteen, Dr. Tom Davy and I presented Match at the National School Board Administrators Meeting in San Diego where the entire Martin County School Board was at. The Centers for Digital Education named me one of their top thirty technologies, transformers, and trailblazers. To put that board in perspective, Mark Zuckerberg was named in that same year. Since inception of Match, we've been externally funded over eleven million dollars, fourteen times by the Blue Cross, and never cost schools a penny. Match was paused in two thousand and twenty three due to lack of turnover and lack of fidelity here in Martin County since I had additional Blue Cross money to pay for Match where we could actually pay teachers for implementing, and I wanted to get it back in Martin County where it started to benefit our students. I emailed the superintendent Van Heath on April the fourth, two thousand and twenty four to offer Match. Since emails sometimes get blocked or lost, we carried a hard copy by and we never heard anything, so we missed the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five school year. This past November, I briefly met Dr. White at the Northeast Risa where she told me who to contact Martin County schools. December twenty fourth, Faith Tindall presented Match to Martin County school officials and made an offer to put Match back in. We did not hear anything from Martin County schools over the next four months, so I changed directions. Last Monday, I emailed the entire Board of Education and the County Commissioners to help me get an answer as to why. Chairman Purvis emailed me back to get more information. We set up a meeting for last Wednesday, April second, nine thirty. Ironically, five hours before we were to meet, I got an email at four twenty four a.m. from Martin County Schools turning down the offer. So my question, Mike, is why?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hardison. We appreciate your passion and your desire to give back to the community. Okay, board. Now we have announcements. Just please be aware that on April fourteenth, we have our joint commissioner meeting at seven p.m. On April twenty first, we have, well, the twenty first through the twenty fifth, spring break, and I do want to recognize and give a shout out to the prom queen Miley and prom king Titus. Anything else?
We have to do the action items.
I'm sorry. Board, we need to, a motion for approval of personnel.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved the second to approve personnel and close minutes.
So moved.
Got that properly moved the second to approve the closing minutes and keep them closed? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Any other comments? Then, board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It is eight sixteen.
So moved.
Been properly moved the second, all in favor of adjourned, please say aye. All opposed, meeting adjourned.